Mike. Good afternoon. I see we have a great crowd in attendance today. Been looking forward to getting this meeting started. So I'm going to, at this time, ask Pastor Gary here with the Cabaret Baptist Church and Ms. Patricia Lane to give us our pledge of allegiance. Will you all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gary.
I thought you asked me to do that. Okay. I was surprised too. Please forgive me. I'd rather pray. Let's all bow for prayer. Your heavenly Father, with your perfect law, please restore our souls. With your sure testimonies, we pray that you would make the simple of us to be wise. With your righteous precepts, we beg that you would cause our hearts to rejoice. With your pure commandments, we ask that you would please enlighten our eyes. We acknowledge that the cleanliness of the fear of the Lord endures forever. And with your true judgments, we know that they are righteous. Father, we beg today that you would give wisdom to this city council, to our city and others participating, all for your honor and your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask, House City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior. Councilor Bruce.
Here.
Councilor Katz.
Here.
Councilor Crum.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Mohammed.
Present.
Councilor Monday.
Here.
Councilor Murray.
Here.
Councilor Willis.
Here.
We have 10 out of 10 present. That's enough for a quorum. We have the bid open this morning, Westminster Utility Department, on the fire of the Westminster Housing Authority.
Motion approved.
Second. In discussion. Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Second on my agenda, I have a special request from a Ms. Mariah Slaughter, an eight-year-old young lady. Is she here?
Yes. Do we need to make a motion to put that on the agenda?
It's, it's on my agenda.
You already get a copy, it's on the agenda.
Well, let me do this. Can I get a motion second to add her to the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She's added. Baby?
Mariah.
Ms. Mariah, how you doing? I hear you're going to do something special for us today. Go ahead, you have the floor.
I am Black History. I am the change. If you see me, you will know because I show it as I grow. Give me time to demonstrate how to love and not to hate. With my life, it is not strange. I am Black History. I am the change.
Yes.
Wow. That was so awesome. You all, once again, give Ms. Mariah Slaughter that hand again. All right, at Ms. Mohammed's request, we are going to move her Black History program to the end of, we're out of permission request? Is that fine?
Right, I make that motion that remove the Black History program right underneath O2.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, can I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
In discussion on the minutes. Hearing none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. We have all, all business. Well, I just been notified that the, that the council discussed tabling R2.
Motion.
I make the motion.
You made the motion, councilor?
Second. Clarify that. R2 and permission request. That's right.
R2 and permission request. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the table?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? R2 and permission request is tabled. So we're going to go to the second reading. See the attorney?
This is the third reading, I think.
Third, actually, yes.
Okay.
This is the third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at Coon Road, Service Road, permitting a 125-foot monopole telecommunications tower in a I-1 light industrial district.
I also understand with this, you have a couple individuals, Attorney Smiley here and I think the other attorney.
It's Mr. Ziegler.
Mrs. Ziegler is here as well, that they will be representing both sides about this. So we want to hear from them.
Yes, sir.
I would say they make their presentation now.
Okay.
That way they can travel back.
Sure, sure. Mrs. Ziegler, did you want to go first or? And also, we normally give five minutes for your presentation.
I'll be brief. Okay, yes, I want to pass. This is not a legal issue, this is a business issue, so I'm passing this off to Mr. Ferris to speak on behalf of the cell tower. He knows more about it than I do, any questions he can fill. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Greg Ferris. I represent Verizon Wireless and Tillman Infrastructure. Tillman was approached by Verizon to construct a tower for them based on a need they had. We went to your planning commission who unanimously approved this. There's been some discussion as whether or not we could go on a tower that's a mile away. I've provided different information through the mail and also what we had presented at the planning commission. This is really about whether or not we comply with your ordinance. I believe your planning commission has determined that we comply with your ordinance. I believe your planning director at the planning commission said that we complied with your ordinance. I believe that your city attorney has confirmed that we comply with your ordinance. One of the things your ordinance requires is that we prove that we can't go on another tower. You have a written presentation from me. You also have diagrams from Verizon showing the difference between the two towers and why we need this tower. That complies with your ordinance and confirms what we said. Doesn't really matter, with all due respect to the gentleman from Memphis, doesn't really matter what SBA says that their report shows because their report does not take into consideration Verizon users, customers, and future growth. They have no idea how to know that. So they just do a broad-based amount of spectrum and show what can happen. It's irrelevant because it does not show the true need that we as Verizon have determined. We don't go willy-nilly just putting up towers because there's nothing else to do. These things cost anywhere from $3,000 to $500,000 to construct. They build them where they need them, and they need this one. So I think we have provided and answered every part of your ordinance. We have confirmed the need. We have confirmed all the individual parts of your ordinance. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. I think we'll call Attorney Smiley up and in.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Now, you said that, that you're building it based on the needs. Is this Verizon's need?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what, give me a little snippet of what some of those.
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Right, tell me about what some of those needs may be.
Okay, so what Verizon is trying to do is they're trying to provide adequate coverage to their existing customers and their future customers. And that's what you have in this drawing. Shows where the coverage needs to be and where it is now and why we need this. So it's Verizon trying to meet the goals and objectives. The goals and objectives of Verizon are to provide adequate coverage to their citizens, to their users, to provide good in-building coverage to their users, and to prepare for the future where they see that growth is occurring. This is an area that they see, it's one of your industrial areas, industrial park, that they see that there will be some future growth. They want to be close to that growth. So that's one of the things that they also project is what their future will be as well as what today is.
How much more coverage are we talking about?
Well, again, I think if you look at the diagrams that I provided, it will show, if you look at this, you'll see where the holes are that they're trying to fill. And then you can see here how much change there is. It's a significant amount of change. Do you have this? I'll be happy to leave this with.
If you leave it out, I'm sure I have it, I just don't have it in front of you right now.
You do have it, okay. So this shows and demonstrates what they're trying, the additional coverage they're trying to provide.
But there's really no one there right now. It's just, there, there's no one, there's no property, there's nothing there at this particular time.
Well, yes, and that's what this shows. The yellow is sparse coverage. Yellow means they don't have any in-building coverage. Your phone may work if you're outside, may not. The green is what their objective is. That's the coverage objective for Verizon, is to provide as much green as they possibly can. They can't provide green for the whole county from there, but you can see the difference in the amount of green in the two charts that they, that we provide. Sure.
Also, before we move forward, I just want to sort of apologize to this council body and the individual come to see. I'm just making it from the car Africa, and I've been in Africa ever since Wednesday, so that's why I'm kind of short on asking you, Ms. Mohammed, and you, Councilman Katz, where we at on the agenda, so just excuse me for that. Attorney Smiley, will you come forward? And then we're going to open it up for the council to ask questions. You normally give five minutes for your presentation.
I think this is my famous last words, I'll be brief. Good evening, Mayor, council members, Attorney J.B. Smiley and my colleague Attorney Michael Harris. I think the ultimate, the proposal before you all, I think there's a simple question for you all to ask yourself. Their job is to establish whether there is, the coverage is necessary. The second point that you all have to consider is, if there's a gap in coverage, whether co-location, which is finding another tower to put antenna on, or modification will address the gap in coverage. Modification from SBA standpoint is simply extending the tower 20 feet, which they can do by right. And the next thing you need to ask yourself is, if they put the tower where they're suggesting, whether it's redundancy in coverage, SBA will argue, and their, their maps, their propagation maps will show you that there is significant duplication in coverage. And then the question that I ask myself when I sit on a body across the street, the same question that each and every one of you must ask yourself. Does this proposed tower provide a added benefit for the people of West Memphis? That's the ultimate question for you all. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to address this matter before you take it to a vote. When we talk about co-location, especially in the, through the lens of, is there a gap in coverage, we come up with a completely different situation and backdrop than what Tillman Infrastructure is suggesting. What they're suggesting is that they're placing a tower in a place where there currently is a gap in coverage. But the problem is that, and we heard this in the previous presentation where they talked about how 5G capability towers do not have as far of a reaching effect, and by their own argument, it clearly establishes and further beyond what they claim that the coverage is, it establishes that there are no residents that they're serving. The reach of the tower does not provide additional coverage for Verizon customers that live in the region because there are no residents who could be Verizon customers that live in the region. Which now brings us back to the importance of co-location. When we, when we look at co-location, what it's basically saying is that, hey, if there's a tower existing, let's, let's see how we can make modifications or see if we could register service or technology there and place it on the tower to improve or expand coverage. In this case, because the demographic that, that is currently being served is in part served by the SBA tower, which Verizon is already located on, it wouldn't take much to simply make those modifications. And by making those modifications, we have the same effect of filling in some areas that may have some yellow in it. But we're saying that the areas that have yellow in it, that are getting filled, are not areas that have people in it. And so, so that's, that's a big piece of the issue. Then when we talk about whether there's expanded coverage, let's even say for the interstate, then we look at, we have a total of three towers that are providing support for I-40. We have the SBA tower that's providing support for I-40. You have the Phoenix Tower that already exists that's providing support for I-40, as well as the Crown Tower that already exists that's providing support for I-40. So there's no additional benefit to having another tower built. And really quick for time expires, when we talk about the specifications, we also have the issue that, you know, whenever a tower's being built, it needs to be 100 feet from an affronting road. They're acting for variance to be able to, to be 75 feet from the affronting road of Coon Road with no real argument supporting the need for that. They're asking to build a tower at 125 feet as the minimum, with the minimum distance for workable coverage for Verizon to be at 120, but the limit, but the standard is 100. So they're asking to be at 125, and what they're not saying is that, you know, the FCC will, under FCC regulations, they'll have an automatic right to extend that by an additional 20. So if you approve a height of 125, which you're really approving is a height of 145. So those things are all issues, but they resolve back to the fact that there is not a gap in coverage, that it's, that it's been adequately proved, and even by council's own statements today, they're not building the tower today for coverage today. And with that in mind, technology advances and changes so quickly that if, for some reason, things change, yeah, I think we could probably safely assume that the technology of now, by the time those areas are densely populated, will not be the relevant technology of then. And, and so with that, there's no need for an additional tower, and we'd ask that this city council, this governing body, would deny the special, special use permit application filed by Tillman Infrastructure.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Hold, hold, Ms. Holt, Mr. Holt, Ms. Holt. We have hear from both councils, from each cell phone tower. Now I'm going to open it up for the council members to ask any questions that you all may need to ask the either party. Now, you want to be first, go ahead.
Well, my question would be, we didn't hear from you guys until this other one came up. Looks like if you'd known this all along, you would already had it in the works before us until this other company come in. In other words, in other words, we didn't hear from your group until this company here came over and presented their case.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt, for that question. The reason you did not hear from SBA prior to Tillman coming in, because from our standpoint and from the standpoint of the maps, there is no need for an additional tower because we're not serving people. If, if it was a situation where people were being served, you would have heard from SBA seeking essentially a permit to extend a tower an additional 20 feet, which they can do by right. But because there's no people, there is no need for an extension or another tower.
Do you have a rebuttal?
Certainly, not to, not, not to, I've been doing this for a long time, and SBA is here because of revenue. This is not a Tillman Infrastructure application, this is a Verizon application. This is SBA, a tower company, and Verizon. If I was AT&amp;T making this presentation, they couldn't be here. Legally, they couldn't be here because SBA has already determined that anything within a half-mile or beyond a half-mile, they will not oppose in the AT&amp;T new agreement they just drafted. They haven't done that with Verizon yet, so that's why they're here. They recognize that a half-mile or more is important, this is over a mile away. And so when you're talking about, and they're saying there's no houses, we're, we're not, we don't just serve houses. You know, there's companies, there's buildings, there's employees going back and forth to there. Verizon does a very complicated matrix where they look at where, they know exactly who uses a phone, I'm sorry to tell you, but they know exactly who uses the phone, when they use the phone, for how long they use the phone, and what they use it for. And that all goes into a matrix to determine whether there's a need or not. And that's what they did with these maps that you have.
Excuse me. All right.
Can I respond to that? Now, I want to be clear, the council was being factually inaccurate about several things. One, we're not talking about over a mile distance, specifically 0.96 miles, which is less than a mile. Number two, when we talk about what the dynamics are between the agreement between SBA and AT&amp;T, one, he's not in a position to know all of the intricacies of those dealings, and he is, he is, he is, excuse me, he is, he is at this point bringing irrelevant information into this conversation. And all of these things are to take away from the fact that there's just simply no people in the area that he's seeking to serve. And I want to also add that when we talk about coverage on the interstate, we're talking about 52 seconds of coverage in a space that's being serviced by three towers. And if the goal was to improve coverage for folks riding on the expressway, then co-location certainly is the best opportunity to do that. Whether it's co-location, or whether it's enhancing on SBA's tower, or co-location efforts with Crown Tower, or co-location efforts with the Phoenix Tower. So all of these things matter, and the bottom line is, there's no gap in coverage that has been established, there's no gap in coverage because there are no residents there. And so the imposition of a tower is, at best, nothing more than a strategic play to the business efforts of Tillman Infrastructure and not an effort to provide enhanced and expanded coverage for residents in this community, West Memphis, Arkansas.
My next question, any other council want to?
If I may, there was an article written by David, I believe his name is Simmons or Simmons, I'm sure he's supposed to be a guru in cell towers. One of the things that I was, he was speaking of in this article was Verizon would transmit on a mid-band, I'm going to use the word frequency, and in that band, they use 4G, I believe it's LTE, and 5G. Sometimes they'll transmit at a lower frequency and then piggyback that with another frequency in order to have coverage. I know Hino is inside that circle that's on the graph there. I did the best I could with an aerial photo to try to determine where the coverage was. It's just a little off of, I believe it's College Boulevard, Mid-America Avenue is just a little further east of that, but that is our industrial park. And again, from my guess, my standpoint, being selfish, if we can provide better coverage in that industrial park, even though the industry's not there today, it may be the tipping point for us to gather a new industry. So that was my position in trying to look at, are we providing a good service, a product that will help West Memphis grow and be a better service for the people, businesses, and industry that are out there? And that was kind of, unless I'm way off on looking at that graph.
And council member, I apologize, I spent about an hour trying to get you a good diagram, and I could not figure out how to do an overlay. I'm just not that good with a computer to show an overlay in Google versus the PDF. I apologize.
Well, I took the accessories, I went to their website where I could see the actual boundary lines for each lot. Your green photograph is not the best in the world, but I could make out the, I could tell where the pond was. So had a pretty good idea that it was, it was doing a very, a pretty good representation of servicing the west side of College Boulevard, which is again, part of our industrial park.
And interestingly, the argument that there are no houses, usually when I attend these meetings where there's houses nearby, we have a bunch of people there to oppose it. The only opposition that you have to this tower is a company that has a financial gain if this tower isn't constructed. This is not a Tillman application. This is a Verizon, he keeps referring to Tillman. This is a Verizon application. Verizon is the company that decides where their coverage is and what their needs are. This has nothing to do with Tillman, other than they contracted with Tillman, just like they contract with SBA to build them, them towers. This one happened to be Tillman, but this is about Verizon, not Tillman.
Does any other?
Mayor, I don't know if Mr. Bowman can address this. When all that property was settled in lawsuit and annexed in, I don't think any of it was annexed in as S1 or residential, single-family. It's all commercial industrial. So I don't think there's ever going to be residents there, it's just a matter of servicing businesses.
Any other council member want to ask a question?
I have a question, I do.
Councilwoman.
And the businesses, and asking behind, with you, Council Katz, the businesses that we are speaking of, are any of these businesses a part of the 2040 growth plan? Do you know, or have you looked at that, that in reference to what we're trying to do for the, for that service area?
I would have to refer to Mr. Bowman on that. I know we started the development of the industrial park many, many years ago.
Right.
And again, from my standpoint, the more we can bring that would entice the business to locate this, we definitely need to look at, is that an advantage for us?
Well, that was, that was my reason. Both of you gentlemen have established great, I am so embarrassed, great arguments, however, the 2040 plan, would that be an addition in that area if those towers were to go up?
Of course, by his report, it would be an addition, but what I'd rather speak about more specifically is the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Now, I'm a representative of the city of West Memphis, so I have a right to inform city council. And I'll just read to you what the Telecommunications Act of 1996 says. "A local government shall not reasonably discriminate between providers of functionally equivalent services when regulating the placement, construction, and modification of cell towers." The second point, "A local government shall not prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of service when regulating the placement, construction, and modification of cell towers." The third point, "A local government must act on any request for authorization to place, construct, or modify a cell tower within a reasonable period of time after the request is filled." And lastly, "A local government must issue a written opinion explaining its decision to deny a request, which decision must be supported by substantial evidence."
And that is why I asked that question, because I too did my research. Thank you, Mr. Bowman, go ahead, go ahead.
Sure, go ahead.
Counsel is right, that's what the act says. But what he's not sharing with you is the abundance of case law and other authority that says, hey, look, when, when a locale has regulations that govern this process, then it is not discrimination to deny a permit application if co-location is a standard and you require also that you prove and establish that there's a gap in coverage, and you require also that you meet the specifications for building a cell tower. In fact, if you do deny, the denial does not have to have a legal opinion that's long in paragraphs and all of that. It can simply be based on the fact that co-location and the benefit of co-locating, that burden of proof wasn't met. It could be based on the fact that there, that the party seeking to build a new It could be based on the fact that there, that the party seeking to build a new tower did not adequately establish that there was a gap in coverage that they would be servicing. That is not discriminating. And so, with that word discrimination can be really interesting, but in this case, there is law. In cases where discrimination was found, it was because there were no governing regulations, there was no authority directing what the process is in the application process. In this case, there is authority directing the application process. It does require that you establish that there's a gap in coverage today. It does require that you establish that co-location cannot serve the area where coverage is seeking to be improved. The area where coverage is seeking to be improved is the areas in West Memphis, Arkansas, where we have people there, it's not just exclusively.
Can I interrupt for just a second? Can I interrupt for just a second? I just want y'all to remember that we had a tower issue before by the church over on the service road. There were reasons why we were trying to deny it, which were not in accordance with that federal statute. I realize each of these people have their own positions, and what I'm telling you as city attorney is, there's no legal reason to deny this application, and there may be legal reasons not to deny it. So, you can take that as you will.
Okay.
And if I may add, may I? I think when the gentleman addressed the particular position that said that this body must act, it doesn't say you must affirm, it doesn't say you must deny, but this body has the authority to make a decision. And what I, you know, what I don't like, and what I would hope this body would be apprehensive about is entities suggesting that you all are not duly elected by the people of West Memphis, that you all do not have the authority to make a decision that's in the best interest of the people of West Memphis.
And if I might just follow up real quickly, I didn't bring up the Telcom Act, that was your staff that did that. All I brought up is coverage maps showing that we have a gap. He keeps walking up here saying, I've not provided you information that there's a gap, I have provided you two pieces of information, written and also overlay documents. So, you know, he keeps saying that you don't have that, but you do have that. The Telcom Act is so complicated, I never bring it up when I'm at a hearing. It's way too complicated to try to get through. And I'm not a lawyer, but I've read it, I understand some of it, but I don't think anybody understands it all. But I just want to make sure you understand, I'm, I spent 12 years on a city council. You have every right to approve or deny this. You need to follow your staff's recommendations, you need to follow your planning commission's recommendations, who have determined that I provided the adequate information that your code required, and that was their conclusion, that that information was provided.
And if I? I'm gonna try to keep walking up here. I heard something. It was that you need, you need to follow staff recommendations, you need to follow the recommendations, you know. I sit across the street as the chairman of the Memphis City Council, and there's been plenty of times that we have recommendations from our, our council attorney, we have recommendations from the land use and control board, which is, would be effectively here, your zoning commission. And what our body always decides, we ask ourselves a lot of questions. If we, are we following the applicable law? And if we are, the last question we always ask ourselves, are we providing a tangible benefit or an added benefit of the people of our city? By their own admission, we're not adding a benefit to the people of West Memphis.
Please don't put words in my mouth, I did not admit that.
I wish I could speak without being interrupted, sir. And then the next thing, they talked about the expressway. If we are driving on the expressway, if you're driving at average speed of about 70 miles per hour, you're talking about 52 seconds, 52 seconds, that's it. What I, what I would hope this body does today, or do today, is to deny this application. And deny this application simply because co-location or modification of SBA tower could or would address the potential gap in coverage. And the second reason, to the extent that they were able to build a tower, you're talking about redundancy in coverage. And the third thing, the question I always ask myself when I get ready, when I sit in those similar seats, is, is it providing an added benefit to the people of West Memphis? And our position is, it does not. This does not provide a benefit to people of West Memphis. What it does do is for dollars and, dollars in the pockets of not the people of West Memphis. I'm gonna leave it at that, thank you.
To the council members, both of you all, all of you all have here from both attorneys, I want you all to have all the information that you can, that you need to make an adequate decision. Is there any more questions that you need to ask before I call the row on this?
I just got one question. This has been the most complicated issue I think we've faced over towers. But you had mentioned redundancy. Do you not believe redundancy is a good thing?
Well, when we talk about redundancy, part of the statute, part of the ordinance layout governing the process for building a new tower is that duplication of coverage is avoided. And that is to stop the imposition of towers or the efforts to build towers just everywhere. And so, on the one hand, the coverage is duplicated, but that does not necessarily result in the coverage being improved. It's just duplicate coverage, especially when there's not a gap that demands added coverage to service people adequately. And that is not what we're, that is not what we're hearing. What we're looking at is a situation where, even for the duplicate coverage, it is not duplicate coverage even in an area that is densely populated. So, it is, so duplicate coverage sounds like a good thing, but it's something that we believe the guidelines were seeking to avoid specifically.
This, this one to do before we move forward. I don't get.
I don't wanna get in the back and forth.
If you all want to give a one-minute last speech, and then I.
Call the vote, call the vote.
Okay, well, call, call the row. Hold, hold, hold.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
No, I'm, I'm, call the vote, this is the chairman's vote.
Okay, go ahead, call the row.
Councilor Bruce?
No.
Councilor Cat?
Yes.
Councilor Crum?
Yes.
Councilor Harris? Counselor Holt?
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson?
Pass.
Counselor Muhammad?
Pass.
Counselor Monday?
Yes.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Willis?
We have six yeses and one no, and three passes, the motions. The ordinance to grant special use permit did pass. Six there, one no, and three pass.
Thank you.
All right. Will you give that?
I've certainly enjoyed visiting your city, you really, watching you all in action. You really love your city. I'm very, very impressed with this city council. I've been through a lot of them. You guys, just watching you and how you interact with your citizens, very impressive.
Always a pleasure, thank you all, and maybe excuse.
Will you give that ordinance number?
Ordinance number 2663, 2663.
That ordinance number is 2663. Before I go to new business, I see that we need to add R2, R3, a settlement agreement, and an intergovernmental agreement. Can I get a motion, second, to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
All pay, by?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's add to the agenda. See the turn, Ms. Muhammad?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor. I'd like to make a motion that R1, R2, R3, O1, and O2 be read by title only.
Second.
All pay, by?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, city attorney?
R1 should have been tabled.
No, we did R2, and a permission request was taped, that was the only thing that was tabled.
All right, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a historic preservation easement on behalf of the city of West Memphis.
Make a motion to table, mayor and pre-council, Mr. Whitehead came up and discussed this, and we decided to table it.
Are you gonna table indefinitely, or for two weeks?
Two weeks.
I thought it would, of course, I'd second the motion, but I do think that there needs to be consideration on both sides of that, and maybe we can meet with them next week and go through all of those.
All right, well, we have a motion and second to table it for the next council meeting? I get it, all pay, by? All right, opposed? It passes, it'll be back on the agenda in two weeks.
It'll be actually March 7th, I think is the next meeting.
March 7th, okay. All right, R2?
R2, is that?
You need the two you told me to add.
Oh, is that what you wanted? Okay. R2 is a resolution authorizing the city of West Memphis to seek a 2024 rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity raise planning grant from the United States Department of Transportation. This is Mr. Whitehead, I think is.
It is, it's.
Can I get a motion and second to approve that?
So moved.
Hang on a second.
Second.
End discussion. Whitehead, you want to come?
Mr. Whitehead, we're gonna get your name right one day.
Sorry about that.
I got several names around here, running jokes around here. I'll try to be brief.
Sorry about that, Ray.
Happens a lot, actually.
Well, it, Mr. Crum got me going.
You have a packet with you, with some maps. What we're trying to do is apply for a planning grant to do a lot of studies, but quickly, we're looking at the 10-mile bayou. We're wanting to construct, dredge it out and construct a multipurpose, multi-use pedestrian and bike pathway that would run, basically connect to the Green or the Big River Trail across the Mississippi River, connect, run through the 10-mile bayou, and then actually go down to Rayner Road. And then, well, that's the colored part. We're also planning to study, those black lines would be bike corridors on city streets to allow for safer bike passageway and pedestrian passageway. We've had about 24 deaths since 2015 on our roadways from pedestrians, that's about three a year. So, we're envisioning some kind of barrier along the roadways. That's kind of what this first page shows. The second page shows all the locations that could be impacted. Nine schools, 12 parks, and at least eight points of interest that would be connected by this Greenway, 10-mile Greenway and bike corridor. They're listed on the third page. And then the last page of this handout shows, one of the, one of the aspects of this grant is that it needs to focus on areas of persistent poverty and historically disadvantaged communities, which we check a lot of those boxes, you can see by those maps. It kind of overlays where this project would go. We've been doing work on this for about a month and a half with our consultant, John Youngbeck, Dwayne Rose, Rhonda Standridge, Chad has helped out a lot with this. So, this, this resolution would, just lend your support, we've already gotten four letters of recommendation from Representative Rick Crawford, Deborah Ferguson, the college, and West Memphis School District. And again, this is for a planning grant. We wouldn't be doing any dirt work, it would be a lot of outreach, a lot of the environmental studies, engineering studies, things of that nature.
All right.
Mr. Whitehead? Mayor, mayor? If you, if we are awarded this grant and this project, will let, I heard you say that you go to clean out the bayou?
So, everything we do with this grant, if we're awarded it, would be the footwork for a capital grant to, yes, dredge out the 10-mile bayou and make access points where our workers could get in there and keep it cleaned out from overgrowth and trash debris of that nature.
Good. Would it also be done in phases?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would.
That's all.
Keep the trash out of, what we do, what you have to do, go by there, it looks like maybe you can just water it up.
That's a good question. I, I'm not sure that I can really answer that, that'd be part of the study. We would have to look at if we would need to hire additional workers, what, how many access points we would need, if there's any equipment modifications to the drainage, like nets or something that we might could put up, that would be part of the study. We've been working with Mike Foster with Pickering.
All right. I got a motion and second to approve. All pay, by?
Aye.
Opposed? That resolution needs to approve. Will you give a resolution and a number?
Thank you, council.
Resolution number 2296, 2296.
2296, that number, once again, is 2296. R3?
No, it's a, it's a separate, it's a separate.
We got this available agreement.
Okay, let's do O1 ordinance, please.
O1 is an ordinance to amend ordinance 2564 establishing water rates for the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
It'll be back in two weeks on the second reading. O2?
O2 is an ordinance to repeal certain ordinances of the city of West Memphis, Arkansas.
It would be back also on two weeks on the second reading. Before I go further, I want to definitely introduce everyone to someone, I want to introduce, will you come forward, please? I want to introduce our new utility, gentleman manager. Mr. Bill Atkins, Atkins, will you come to the mic? Just kind of tell the council a few things about yourself and the good things you're gonna continue doing here in the city of West Memphis with the utility department.
Sure, so my name is Bob Atkins, and as Mr. Mayor said, I'm the new GM of the, of West Memphis Utilities. I've been in the utility industry for 35 years, so, and have a lot of plans for how we can keep up the good work that we're doing here and make as many things better as we can. So, some of the things that are extremely important to me are reliability, our customer experience, and, and rates. So, we're gonna make sure we do a lot of good work there.
I think Bob is gonna do a great job with our new internet services that we have coming here to the city, and I think that's gonna be amazing for the city of West Memphis, so definitely, he is someone trained that can help get it to the next level.
Yeah, I'm honored to be here, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
A little bit of work with you. Thank you.
Welcome.
Nice meeting you all, thank you.
Okay, under permission request, I added that intergovernmental agreement. Can I get a motion and second to approve that?
So moved.
All pay, by?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and second, we have another settlement agreement that.
Well, so. I apologize. When we, there was no discussion?
No, I thought you were just adding to the agenda.
No, I had, you were.
He wants to talk about it, I'm sure. I'm sorry, I just thought, you know, Dwayne Rose wants to talk about it too. Assistant Chief Presley wants to talk about it, so.
Can we go back and sort of talk about this piece out there?
No, they passed it already.
I don't know, the council can revert, though. But, councilman?
And maybe that the emergency management coordinator can just confirm, it's my understanding, of course, everybody just got this 30 minutes ago, is the revenue stream is the total county 911 funds, roughly $932,000, if my research is correct, budget for the new 911 system, which I was for when we first built it. Budget for the new nine-one-one system, which I was for when we first built the jail, but it did not happen then, is a shade over one point four million. So we basically have a four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar deficit. It's my understanding that the way this is going to be approached is on a per-call basis. So, from, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but only two communities are, are paying the bills here, and that's Marion and West Memphis. No one else is paying anything in this county. My concern is there's nothing here about a, a capital account. We know this equipment is gonna tire. You know, we need to start putting money aside now, there, you know, for ten years from now or five years from now when the new equipment needs to be updated or new equipment needs to come in because of technology. It just, just concerns, I, I'd like to meet with our six representatives on the, on the quorum court, you know, what is their input? How are they looking at this before we actually vote on it? Uh, I think they're meeting Monday or Tuesday. I love to meet with them Monday at six and, you know, go through that process. I'm always thinking everybody should pay their fair share. And I, I think that can be done by taxes and other means, utilities, water, uh, where you attach it to the statements, you know, it's three dollars a month. I don't, I don't know what the funding source needs to be. I just know from my standpoint, only two communities are paying for the countywide system. And that's where I guess I have a, a bit of a difference.
Well, in our last meeting, that did come up and, uh, the quorum court was the, the, decided that the smaller communities would not be required to pay. It would be Marion in West Memphis.
And again, I apologize to everyone. I just, to me, everybody benefits from the system. It should be fair across the board as far as cost goes.
So what I was told, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I've been at the meetings, so I know what, what, uh, has been told to us when we've been at the meetings from the county. And what the county has said is that the cost is so low, uh, based upon the usage of these other towns in, in Crittenden County that it's not worth, uh, billing them for it. I think is what I was told and I see Dwayne is, is nodding his head at me. Um, and that's the reason that they haven't. It just doesn't amount to a whole lot. Uh, yes, it is based upon usage and yes, West Memphis will have the most usage because we have the most population and unfortunately, that gets the most cost. And, uh, so we would get, uh, our portion of the money from the state, which would be based upon usage. The future, uh, after twenty twenty-five, uh, any equipment purchases would be, uh, we'd be paying our share of the equipment purchases based upon usage. And, uh, I don't know any other way to do it besides basing it on usage. I mean, if somebody can come up with a better alternative that's fair to, uh, everyone else in the county that they'll sign off on, I'm listening. But, uh, it seems to me that usage would be the proper way to look at it. And I think what Tori has said about the equipment purchases is that I think we're okay on that. You, you can speak to that, Tori. I can't. Um, but that's what I've been told.
I don't have a mic. Um, but, um, as far as the capital outlet, this is more so so it'll be the process more, right? Um, things may change down the line, but as far as right now, we have enough funds without going into detail to cover this for a couple of years. Once we get down the line, we see how things are gonna go, how much we probably gotta get paid, all of that, and then we get the actual split. Then we can go and we can set aside a capital account for it. Mind you, this is a three-way street. It's three. It's West Memphis, Marion and the county.
The only... I did not read in the agreement I saw. The only portion the county had was all the revenues that they were receiving. They weren't paying anything additional out of their general fund.
It's, it's a three-way.
It's not in the document.
I don't, I don't know how it's worded, but it's a three-way street.
Uh, and again, my thing is, the four consols that are going into the, we just bought. You know, they're gonna total right at five hundred thousand dollars. They have a life expectancy of ten years. You know, after that, they start waning and then after twenty, you're really gonna throw away. But if a year or so now, uh, we need to go and replace six hundred thousand dollar equipment and one of the two communities who are paying for everything aren't able to come up with their share of the money, where do we go?
I mean, I don't know. It's so different then if it wasn't merging, we would still have to replace that equipment and so we can still so much to stop it. But I can't speak to ten years down the line right now.
I just think we need to plan for it, so...
But, I mean, if he had to pay for it now, then we just have to pay for it now.
Which we did. Most of it came through grants. You allocated the funds for it to, to take care of the balance. And if five years from now, this council could reappropriate funds to pay for another five hundred thousand dollar equipment, they could put a millage on the taxpayer if they wanted to. You know, there's a lot of things they could do. But with the county, uh, my position is, we, you know, we don't have any say-so in that matter, so... And it's always bothered me that we're not planning long-term.
Uh, chief, did you want to say something about this? I know you've been in the meeting.
I just want to bring up how important this is and this ain't, this ain't just a this week or last week deal. This been going on since two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah.
When this first started. We don't have to combine the communication center, but the nine-one system's gone. Either we're gonna get it or the, or the, uh, county's gonna get it. The state's gonna make that decision come January one. The guy told us at that meeting, we're, we're probably not even gonna be consolidated by then, but we're losing funding. A hundred and twenty-five thousand to three hundred something thousand dollars a year when that happens. It's going to the county or it's coming here, more than likely county, because at the facility right now, we can't house them. We can't, we, we don't have a place for this. So, and they do. I think when they built the jail, this was taught back then of what was gonna happen. Now we're here, but we've been putting it off for five, six years. It's gotta be done.
Chief, you got a mandate from the state to have it done by January of twenty twenty-five?
Correct. With, January one. The issue I got with it, the money situation, that's for you all to work out. You know, I, I can't come up with the money out of my back pocket. I don't know who's gonna come up with it. But I agree with him. Everybody should be paying their own. The county statement, the county judge's statement was, they were gonna take responsibility for Earl, Terrell and all the small agencies because there's such small call volume there. Then we would take majority of the hit because we are bigger, the biggest city in the county. My issue is right now, I can take you down here and show you what we're working with. And this is stalled. Our radios are falling apart.
Yeah.
One of these days, you're gonna get a phone call and an officer's not gonna be able to be dispatched because his radio don't work. This, we got, I don't know how many millions of dollars worth of radio equipment sitting in Jonesboro waiting on this. And like I told them out there, I don't care anything about the merger, but I gotta get radios online. We are buying parts from eBay to fix the fire department radio. So, and we bought all the parts off eBay we can find to fit that, because when I called a radio company, say, hey, I gotta have this part. We told you eight years ago, this was coming. Now we don't have it. It's not existing. But we found three or four on eBay to try, so I told the guy, order them. Let's get them in here. Let's get this up. So now we're to the point where we're operating off handhelds and mobile radios inside our dispatch center. So it, you don't know how important that is. The next storm comes along, when that nine-one, I mean, when that fire radio goes out and we can't dispatch ambulance to your loved one, then we gotta, we gotta explain what happened.
So what happened to the AWIN program?
It's sitting in the flow in Jonesboro waiting on this.
We, we need an agreement.
And this is our initial agreement, right?
Is it approved?
I appreciate, I mean, I appreciate Councilor Kat's input.
Yeah, this, this is an agreement that, there was some conflict about the agreement. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. I wish y'all could have been there in this meeting so you could hear what's going on, because most people are getting in on the back end of this. Nobody's been in on it from the front. It's all coming in on the back end.
Well, the major changes we had from the last time we met was the county wanted everybody to split the cost of doing some remodeling to their building. And we said, no, it's not our building. We don't think we should be paying for the remodeling costs. So they agreed, uh, county judge, we, we just agreed to take that cost on there. We're getting some money from the state and then they're gonna pay for the remainder, whatever those remodeling costs are. That was one of the concessions they made at the last meeting that we had, which I thought was gonna be the biggest sticking point, really.
That is correct. I've, I've reached out to them and asked them where we're at. So right now, I don't know if it's been stalled or not, but from my understanding is, uh, they're gonna try to put us online by April the first with our radios. But the county's saying, hey, I gotta have this agreement. This is stalling us. I gotta have this agreement. Now, they're scared to move forward because they don't think, they don't know what's gonna happen. So if we, they scared if they move forward and then this gets stalled, they're gonna be out all this money. So if, if I, if we brought the radios into our department and put them in, I think to move them, once this merger has to happen, it's gonna cost us five hundred thousand dollars just to move those equipment back to the county. That's not including the cost of them coming over here and putting it in. So we're gonna be out a lot of money. So, I mean, I don't know how we gotta work this out, sit down and discuss it, whatever we gotta do, but we gotta, we need to move forward before it costs us a lot of money.
Well, chief? Uh, the council has already approved it, but out of respect, we wanted to hear from each council person and their concerns, and I think we have period their concern. I think the only one had a concern majorly with Councilman Kat, but it has already been approved, so we go...
My concern is, as, as I said, this should have been done when the jail was first built. My concern, and so everybody's aware, this doesn't have the proper funding that it needs. They're gonna have to come back. They're gonna have to request more money. This is not a one-time thing. It is going to be ongoing. The budget's gonna change every year. It's gonna increase. The revenue stream they get from the state probably is not going to increase. It's still gonna be around at nine thirty-four, so next year you will be asked for more money. The center is needed, first to agree. I just don't think two people should pay a full tab.
Well, I mean, a budget...
Thank you, thank you.
A budget is a living document, so you can change budgets as you move along, so, and I heard...
Only the quorum court. You, you know, we're having say-so in that matter.
I heard Ms. Tori say that...
Once it's approved, you're giving the county the authority. It is their thing to run with.
It's...
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're gonna move forward to a, a program that we've been doing, I think, about twenty years now. Been headed by our councilwoman, uh, Ms. Mohammed, our Black History Program, and I'm gonna turn it over at this time to Ms. Mohammed to proceed.
First of all, I really thank all of the, the audience, all of our guests. Thank you all so much for sitting in our meeting. I hope you weren't too bored, but at least you got a chance to experience a little bit of what, uh, we do here in, in our city council meeting, trying to make sure our city stays on a winning streak. This program is very near and dear to me. It was established by ordinance under, uh, Mayor Bill Johnson, and we've been doing this for almost twenty years. My first award, and we thank all of our, we thank all of our participants, and we're gonna get to Mr. Solon Anthony because his, he's going to be next. But my first award is going to go to a person, uh, who is very near and dear to me. This young man approached me about twenty years ago. He had a gold tooth in his mouth. And he said, uh, I want to run for city council. Will you help me win? And I looked at this young man and I said, uh, young man, I don't know you, but I will help you win. And of course, it was a three-way street. He was in a runoff. My children and I, we walked the streets and we introduced ourselves. At that time, I was already on council and a few people knew me, so I had a little bit of influence. So we walked the streets and, and, and we walked in the runoff. The, November is very, very dark. I did not realize it was so dark in November. So when I looked at him and he smiled at me and that gold tooth was flickering, and I said, if he wins, that's gotta go. That has got to go. So to make a, a long story short, many of you may wonder why Mayor McClintock, no matter what people may say or how we bump heads or disagree, if you notice anywhere we are, if I'm there, Mayor McClintock is always gonna call Ms. Mohammed. You know why? I got him started in politics and we have a bond just like this. Do we always agree? No, we don't. But the bottom line is this, when two hearts are knit together, the disagreements will soon dissipate. So Mayor McClintock, this is from me personally here this Black History Month. Tori, you don't have to worry about this coming out of the budget. I paid for it. It wasn't a lot, but I paid for it. Mayor McClintock, I'm letting him come up first. This is all. Congratulations, Black History Month twenty twenty-four. Mayor Marco McClintock, from your political mom, Lorraine Mohammed, City Councilwoman. A true leader has the confidence to stand alone, the courage to make tough decisions and the compassion to listen to the needs of others. He does not set out to be a leader. He becomes one by the quality of his actions and by the integrity of his heart. In the end, leaders are much like eagles. They don't flock. You'll find them one at a time. And I would like to add, if you want to be an eagle, don't hang around turkeys. That is my addition.
I'm so honored by this. It's so unexpected. This really means a lot to me, especially to have this from Ms. Mohammed. We have been up here for a long time. And I think we got so much more to do here in the city as a council, as well as, uh, the, we come to work for the city of West Memphis. I thank everyone and I'm grateful what we do happens. So, once again, Ms. Mohammed, thank you. I see the girls in the house. How y'all doing, Miss Ken? Miss Chloe, I see you all.
Shalay.
But I just want to thank everyone that has been hard to make this happen for me as well as make a Western brother. I just, thank you and God bless.
Thank you so much, Ms. McClintock. I, it was just in my heart to do that for you. Mr. Solon Anthony is going to, Solon, I believe, is going to come. His son came to the job today and asked me if I would, uh, be gracious and lenient to him. And we're gonna ask Ms. Carolyn if she will come to read. And I know he can't come. I need someone to, are you, uh, are you taking pictures, little Joan? I need someone to take pictures for me. Anybody got him? Steve, anybody?
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mohammed and Mayor in the city council. Good evening. On behalf of Mr. Solon Anthony, who's the owner of Anthony Funeral Home, which has been in operation since nineteen forty-six, over seventy-seven years, which this year will make seventy-eight years, with three locations now, two in West Memphis and the original location still in operation on Highway seventy-nine in New Hart, which is now Anthonyville. Mr. Anthony and his late wife, Eleanor Anthony, purchased the business from his brother. Not only was he trying to make the funeral home business work, he had still not completed college. Founded in nineteen sixty-four, Solon graduated from Mississippi Industrial College in Hollis Springs, which is now Russ College. With the, with a degree in elementary education, later Solon became principal of Arthur Evans. Once Arthur Evans closed, he became the first African-American male assistant principal in Hughes, Arkansas. God bless Solon and Eleanor with four children, Tandy, Frederick, Sandra and Audrenelle. Our children are actively participating with the operations of the funeral home business now. We also have grandchildren and preparing great-grandchildren. The company motto says that on serving the community since nineteen forty-six, where economic honesty, professional service is not a slogan, but a reality. Thank you all.
Celebrating Black History Month. Celebrating Black History Month. Will someone please come and receive Mr. Solon, uh, award? This is a living legend award. I would like to add that Mr. Anthony turned ninety-eight years old. Presented to Solon Anthony, thank you for your many years of commitment, dedication, inspiration and service to the citizens of West Memphis, Arkansas and beyond. Marco McClintock, Mayor, sponsor Lorraine Mohammed, West Memphis City Council. Ms. Mayor, tell me, come on, Ms. Harris. Ms. County, is she here? Ms. Tony, is she here? Mr. Anthony, you wanna say something? Please say something. He wants to say something. You all, this is Ms. Mary Tony. Many of you may not know that we had other city councilwomen on the city council of some time back. She's one of our legends who served on the West Memphis City Council. She has many credentials that accompany her. She's, does much work in the community, much work in the church, and we would just like to present her with this award. This says, presented to Mary Mukes Tony, thank you for serving the citizens of West Memphis with hard work and dedication. As a West Memphis City Council member, Marco McClintock, Mayor, Lorraine Mohammed, sponsor, West Memphis City Council, February twenty fourteen.
I would just like to say for myself, she's always been an icon to me. She's always, I could ask her anything when I see her, or call, or go by her house. She's just a people person, she have big love for everybody, and I just love her. She's always been the same, she's no different. Anytime you see her, if she can help you, she will. She is my Bible teacher, and she's just a wonderful person, and I thank God for her.
I would just like to say thank you for the award, and I want everybody that's in here to know that everything I've ever done has been for our community. I used to drive the little white telephone company car, and I would be in eastern Arkansas, and I would see schools in other places, and I would wish that we had some type of higher learning here, and I always refer back to, be careful what you ask for, you just may get it. When we say that, we think about it in a negative way, but I speak it in a positive way, because I used to drive around in Batesville, Newport, Bliville, and see the schools and everything, and wish that we had one. Lo and behold, I never, never, never dreamed that I would have as much of an opportunity in this county for all of us. I think that we can make home what we want it to be. This is our home, and instead of being negative, we can just try and be positive. I really am a talker, and I could go on and on and on, but I've had the opportunity to help in many ways, and I never really say anything about it. I believe in doing work and not talking.
Our next honoree is gonna be Ms. Brittany Williams. As Ms. Williams is coming up, Brittany Williams is a West Memphis native and local healthcare provider. She has lived in Crittenden County for thirty-five years and chose to remain here because of her family and her desire to bring jobs to the community. Brittany is a proud graduate of West Memphis High School. She holds an associate's degree in early childhood, education, and a bachelor's of science degree in healthcare administration. Her desire to walk in her, in her God-given purpose resulting in becoming the owner and CEO of Developmental Mile- Milestones In-Home Care Agency LLC, which provides daily living assistance to those in need in the comfort of their home. She al, she's also the owner and CEO of Healthcare Transport Express LLC, where she provides non-emergency medical transportation to and from doctor's appointments in the Arkansas area. Brittany has been featured on CBS Morning Show, Good Morning America, and has been featured in roshers and pamphlets for the largest black-owned credit union, Hope Federal Credit Union, where she spoke on the importance of building credit and financial wealth. Brittany's relationship with those in the community have helped her become a trusted figure in Crittenden County. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Brittany Williams. And I would like to add, Brittany, uh, was a student there at Wonder Elementary School, and I remember when she was in, I believe, kindergarten, I would say, "Brittany, what did you have for lunch?" She would say, "Bean beans." So I started calling her Bean Beans, and to this very day, that's my nickname to Ms. Brittany, is Bean Beans, and she's so successful. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And this says- Celebrating Black History Month twenty twenty-four Business Excellence Award, presented to Developmental Milestones, uh, Care Agency LLC owner Brittany Williams. Thank you for providing healthcare services and daily living assistance to those in need of comfort in their own home. Mayor Marco McClintock, Lorraine Mohammed, City Councilmember. Speech.
And I just wanna say thank you for choosing me to receive this wonderful award, and I look forward to continuing to serve the West Memphis community for many more years.
Thank you, Ms. Brittany. Ms. Stephanie White in the audience, does she step out? And her, her assistant is going to read her bio for us. I would like to say that she is a new addition to our city. She's one of the first in the city of West Memphis, and we're gonna honor her on today.
Good evening, West Memphis City Council, your celebrated mayor, and specifically, Councilwoman Lorraine Mohammed. Uh, we thank you for honoring Ms. Stephanie White, and we thank you for inviting us, period. Everyone is, is so wonderful here. Tonight, I am here to introduce Mrs. Stephanie Jones White, the brand-new twenty twenty-four Executive Director of the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce. Stephanie comes to the West Memphis Chamber of Commerce with a wealth of experience in government, education, and community affairs. Having begun her career as a high school educator, she trans, she transitioned into government and community affairs, where she served as Legislative Director for the Shelby County Commission, and later as Director of Marketing and Communication for the Memphis Library System. In the latter role, Stephanie oversaw the operations and programming for a television channel and a radio station. Stephanie also oversaw business development and marketing with Concretize Strategies LLC, a Memphis-based public strategies firm. A business owner, she is. She is the founder and president of Stephanie's Advanced Mentoring, a company devoted to supporting and empowering women and children. Stephanie has focused the recent work of the company on early childhood literacy and the development of a women's empowerment series. Stephanie is the wife, the beloved wife, of Robert Samuel White II, please stand, and the mother of Robert Samuel White III, please stand. Wonderful young man. And as mother, nicknamed Sam, and as mother of Sam, she has served, she serves as a tremendous testament to her skills, not only as a nurturing mother, but as an effective coach and educator. Again, let's welcome the illustrious Mrs. Stephanie Jones White, the Executive Director-
Well, she's been Miss White, Mrs. White, corsage, and I would like to say this beautiful lady here is the daughter of-
John Ford.
Mr. John Ford, of the Ford family in, in Memphis, Tennessee. She's very astute. Celebrating Black History Month, presented to Stephanie Jones White, congratulations on becoming the first African-American West Memphis Chamber of Commerce Executive Director.
It is truly an honor to be here, um, this evening. I do not take lightly that I'm receiving this award, because I was told that if, if I'm asked, that it is truly an honor, and I am very much honored. Thank you all so much for welcoming me to the West Memphis community, and I will just say that, um, I do appreciate that my husband and my son are here, but this is not child's award, but, um, thank you all so much. Mayor McClintock, thank you for, um, extending such hospitality to us and to all the city council members here, and I just wanna leave you all with this. I am working in order to serve West Memphis and the West Memphis community, so I do welcome the opportunity to be here, and I do thank you, that of the many firsts that I've experienced, this is my first time being a mom, and my first time being able to be in a position like this where I would receive such an award, and I appreciate you all for the acknowledgement. Thank you.
I'm going to ask my daughter Chloe if she'll come, she will be reading this next bio. Ms. Dorcas Brazil, are you present? Ms. Dorcas, come up, please.
Mayor McClintock, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mohammed. During Black History Month, we honor Ms. Dorcas Brazil, the entrepreneurial force behind Royal Design in Uptown West Memphis, Arkansas, for over fifteen years. Graduating from Arkansas State University with a Bachelor of Science degree in social work, Dorcas transitioned her passion for design into a thriving business while specializing in customized floral arrangements, wedding decor, and interior design services. Her entrepreneurial journey marked by resilience and creativity has not only redefined elegance, but also uplifted our community through philanthropy in the form of annual donations to Arkansas Wildlife, Wonder Junior High PTO, and a scholarship program for undergraduate students. As a devoted wife of Kevin and mother of two, Elise and Kevon, Dorcas instills a culture of giving within her family and community. This is exemplified during her annual Thanksgiving Basket Program. Her dedication to compassion and solidarity, coupled with her unwavering commitment to excellence, makes her a beacon of inspiration during Black History Month and beyond. Through recognizing Dorcas Brazil and Royal Design, we honor the enduring contributions of Black entrepreneurs to our shared heritage and future prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I present, before I present Ms. Brazil, I'm gonna ask all of our honorees, if they'll come, so we can get a group picture. We don't have too many more, so they'll, all of our honorees who are still in the building, please come and stand here, uh, in front of the crest, so we can get a group picture for the newspaper and for the news media. Celebrating Black History Month twenty twenty-four Business Excellence Award, presented to Dorcas Brazil Entrepreneur Royal Design. Thank you for your fifteen years of service and dedication to the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, from Mayor McClintock, Lorraine Mohammed, and West Memphis City Council. And I would like to say, she has become a newfound friend of mine. These corsages that we're pinning on the honorees today, she designed these, she has a very, very beautiful shop. I have some of her pieces in my home that makes it look a little bit better. And if you've never been there, they're on, uh, what is it, your address? Nineteen eighty-five Corrigan Drive, you should go, sweet, okay, say it all. She, I mean, she is super talented, and I met her, she did her white, uh, party, uh, Christmas party, she gives scholarships and everything, I mean, it was just so, so beautiful. It was like a dream, it was so beautiful in there. Ms. Dorcas Brazil, thank you for being my friend, and we present you this award. Speech, please.
Thank you, thank you, what an honor. My mom is here. Wave your, yes. No, she didn't bring the sweet potato pie, no, she did. My husband, and my son, and my pastor, Pastor Apollos Royu is here. I would like to thank you, it is such an honor to be here. I love what I do, I love to bring joy with flowers. And if I can leave something with you, this season, God has been dealing with me with a heart of togetherness. It says that one can chase a thousand and two can chase ten thousand. That being, two people are ten times more. Did you hear that? Two people are ten times more. So if we can come together as one, we can do more in the community. Thank you for the honor.
Our next, uh, honoree is going to be Mr. Terrance Anthony Brown. Did he have to leave to go to a meeting or something? So we're gonna ask, I think, his sister or his mom to read the bio. Ms. Shirley Patton Brown, everybody knows who she is. She doesn't have a piece of paper, so she knows exactly what to say. I need you to read his, say something about him, about your son.
Good evening to everyone. To be thrust into this position is a little bit awkward for me. I am not a public speaker, I like to have everything written down, but I'd like to say that on behalf of Dr. Brown, we thank you for this honor. It's rare that you get an honor at the beginning of the race, and I thank you. Uh, I like to call him Terrance. Terrance graduated from West Memphis High School, which is now the Academy of West Memphis, in nineteen eighty-five. He attended Henderson State in Academia, where he played football, he was a Reddy, so he didn't leave the red color. He graduated with a bachelor's degree, and he started working in Memphis, Tennessee, where he worked thirty-one years. In the meantime, he went to the University of Arkansas and, uh, received his master's degree, and then to Memphis, the University of Memphis, where he got his doctoral degree. He's very proud to be, um, a servant in a sense of the West Memphis School District. He feels that he owes West Memphis, and I just thank you again for giving him recognition at the beginning, and I think he's gonna make you proud.
She didn't need a paper, she knew everything, didn't she? Of course, it says, celebrating Black History Month Educational Excellence Award, presented to Terrance Anthony Brown. Congratulations on becoming the first African-American school, school superintendent for the West Memphis School District. Thank you for thirty-two years of hard work and outstanding dedication in the field of education. Your efforts and outstanding dedication makes a difference every day in the lives of your children. Mayor Marco McClintock, City Councilwoman Lorraine Mohammed, West Memphis City Council. Thank you so much for accepting me. I'm gonna ask Ms. Sturgill if she'll come. I'm going to ask Ms. Sturgill if she'll come. Ms. Sturgill? She's going to be reading for Faith International Church, and we're going to ask the young boys that they will all come up here. He doesn't have.
Good evening.
We're going to let the young boys, this is his group that we're going to be talking about today.
I have the privilege this evening of introducing to you Pastor Anthony King. Pastor Anthony King, the senior pastor of Faith International, the City Church, has been an inspiring figure in the community for the past fifteen years. Under his exemplary leadership, Faith International has witnessed tremendous growth and has become a beacon of hope and inspiration for individuals of all ages. His visionary leadership and dedication have transform, transformed the congregation into a vibrant and multi-generational community, particularly appealing to young millennials. One remarkable achievement under Pastor King's guidance was his successful effort whereby he took it upon himself and rallied the community to save the former Wonder Junior High faculty, preventing the demolition of the former school. Recognizing the potential growth and impact, Pastor King saw an opportunity to transform the school into a holistic oasis for the community and city, and the establishing of the Trades for Teens Program. This program aims to equip and empower young boys and girls who are teenagers with valuable trade skills, enabling them to contribute to their communities, their families, and to build a strong economic foundation for their future. Another remarkable initiative led by Pastor King and his church is a juvenile diversion program for students who have been expelled from school. This program allows these students to come to the former school for three to four hours a day, where they can complete their schoolwork in an environment that focuses on teaching conflict resolution, social behavior skills, and the soft skills needed to excel in life and business. By providing a nurturing and supportive space, Pastor King aims to help these young individuals redirect their lives and make positive choices. As a result, the teenagers in Creighton County now have hope for a brighter tomorrow and are better equipped to face the challenges of adulthood. Pastor Anthony King's leadership extends beyond his professional and academic commitments. His thirty-two-year-long marriage to Annette King has been one of his best decisions, and they have served as an embodiment of love and faith within their community. Through their strong bond and example, they inspire others to find happiness and fulfillment in their relationships. The city of West Memphis and Creighton County have greatly benefited from Pastor King, Pastor Anthony King's ministry work. His leadership has created lasting change, instilling hope, and providing practical skills that empower the younger generation. As Pastor King continues to serve with passion and dedication, his impact on the community will undoubtedly endure for years to come.
This award is presented to Faith International Youth Empowerment Ministry, Anthony King Minister. Thank you for creating the Safe Haven Juvenile Diversion Next Generation and Kids Program. Your ministry is truly a blessing and an inspiration to young people in our community. Mayor McClendon, Lorraine Muhammad, the West Memphis City Council. And I'm going to ask one of the boys to, oh, they've already gotten one, thank you.
Our pastor and first lady are currently in California right now, but on behalf of Faith International, our pastor, Anthony King, and our first lady, Annette King, we thank the city council for honoring us and what our pastor's doing. Our pastors truly have a heart for the city and for the youth, and we really thank you guys for honoring our pastor.
Young boys, you all, young men, stand down here, because we're going to go and get tickets, they're going to make, you know, so many of you here. If you want, right down there. Right, right here, if you want to, come here. Ms. Sherilyn, Sherilyn Minnis, and I think her daughter is going to read it, her bio.
she has been an English teacher for the past fifty-six years. She has taught 12th grade AP English for thirteen years, but has also taught 12th grade honors and regular English for the same period of time. Over the past forty-seven years, Ms. Minnis has taught students on all high school levels, including the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade, and has also taught on all learning levels, including what was once called basic, regular, and honors. Ms. Minnis' teaching experiences have spanned generations, including having taught both of her children, his or her parents, and sometimes even the grandparents of the child. Ms. Minnis has a zeal and a passion for teaching and does not waver in her sacrifice to ensure that all of her students leave her classroom an entrenched learner. For this reason, she sets no limits for herself or her students. Any student who enters her classroom will experience a life-altering adventure, both academically and socially, for her philosophy is that produces only two kinds of students, ladies and gentlemen and scholars. Ms. Minnis has been named the West Memphis School District Teacher of the Year twice, and in two thousand and nine, she was honored among fifteen finalists as Arkansas Teacher of the Year. Ms. Minnis won the Teacher of the Year in the Great Rivers Educational Co-op Region, which includes seven school districts. For this honor, she, along with her family, attended a gala at the Governor's Mansion along with other finalists. She was also recognized by State Representative Keith Ingram of Raisa Back Concrete and Blue Bell Ice Cream Company for her noteworthy accomplishments. Ms. Minnis' greatest rewards in life is to share in the accomplishments of her former students, many of them are here now, who returned to her to say thank you. The students who now span the globe have left West Memphis Senior High School, enriched by her teaching experiences, and are now professionals with careers in numerous areas of expertise, and are also giving up themselves in countries as far as ways, Egypt, Spain, and China. The legacy that she hopes to leave in students is that the world will be made a better place because she has made an impact in the life of the child.
Everybody's saying, "My teacher, my children's teacher."
Celebrating Black History Month Living Legend Award, presented to Mrs. Sherilyn Minnis. Thank you for fifty-six years of commitment, dedication, and inspiration in the field of education to so many children in the city of West Memphis. Mayor Marco McClendon, Lorraine Muhammad, City Councilwoman, and sponsor, West Memphis City Council member, Ms. Minnis. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much for bestowing this honor upon, on me. As I look around the room, I see former students, your mayor, city councilman, chaplain, many, many of my students who are out in the audience who have accomplished much and are, have returned to the city of West Memphis as entrepreneurs and various businesses and occupations. Even though I talk much in class, I really don't lack to talk. However, I am, I am very pleased today. Lately, um, well, I did tell my daughter, my daughter, they deceased, I, I told her, I said, "You know, now that I have gotten closer to eighty, everything makes me cry." I said, "But I don't have tears in my eyes." I said, "I just simply have water." She says, "Oh, mama, you're not crying, you're just misty-eyed." So this honor that you have bestowed upon me tonight has definitely caused me to be I am so proud. One of the most important things to me, uh, as a teacher, and I'm here to tell you, the years went by very swiftly, is to see my students, or my former students, in accomplishment roles. That is really my purpose. My purpose is to serve students. And I do tell them, I said, "I can look in your eyes and I can see," and they go, "What do you mean?" I said, "I can see whether you are paying attention, I can tell if you are learning, I can tell if you are ignoring me." And truly, I tell students, "You can never say I am sorry when you're in my room, you can only say that I am a scholar." And I am very proud to have served the community, what, just Creighton County, and have been, played a little role in the production of scholars. So again, thank you very much for the honor. Our very last is a young man that, that I met some years back. He has much, made such an impact, not only on the city of West Memphis, but areas beyond. I'm going to let him read his own story, Mr. Darren Chrisley, if you'll come and bring your stuff. Staff members, if you'd like to come, and stand right over here by the flag. You want them to come and stand? We're going to ask Mr. Chrisley's little boy to please come up, young man, to stand by your dad. Every, every time I see one of your pictures on Facebook, you're always there.
It is truly an honor to be standing up here with a mayor, and like Ms. Muhammad, he and I, we bumped heads along the way, and we found some common ground. To be up here standing next to a lady who used to peach me quite a bit, I know I was a handful for you. It's an honor to be standing in front of my church family, in front of my mom, my wife, or my kids to see this day. I'll just read to you what has been prepared. It is an honor to be able to accept this award. If you would have told me that twenty years ago, I would be where I am now, I probably would have laughed at you. But God has brought me so far that looking back on it sometimes feels like a different life. Because for me, my business started when I was at one of the lowest points in my life. Back then, I was in a wheelchair, and I could barely keep myself upright due to degenerative disc disease. I remember praying to God to give me something to do with my hands. Not long after that, I saw a commercial on TV that said they were selling pallets of household goods that could be resold. Many of you all remember or know me from Ingram Street and from the flea market. I knew that this was the opportunity that I needed, but at that time, I couldn't afford a single pallet, so I had to do something that truly broke my heart. I asked my wife, Tyronda, who's sitting out in the audience, if she would allow me to pawn her wedding ring. And like the amazing and supportive wife that she is, I told her I wasn't going to cry. Ronda, she agreed. And with that hundred and fifty dollars, we drove down to Hernando, Mississippi. We loaded down our eighty-six Blazer, Chevy Blazer and DNT Liquidators was born on that The next day, I parked in front of the Citgo on Ingram, and I set up my goods to sell. That day, I made about eight hundred dollars from those products. And against my wife's wishes, I went back the next day, and I made another seven hundred dollars before noon. But I was approached by the police because I did not have a permit to sell there. You all, I didn't even know what a permit was. I just knew that I needed to provide for my family. But I thank God that an officer who approached me, and that officer was Officer Hampton, he directed me to the flea market, and he got me set up with a lady then by the name of Miss Catherine. And there, I was able to save until the Lord provided me with the means of finding a home for our business. And at seven oh two Ingram, the same parking lot where I began to sell my sales, make my sales, Ronda's Thrift Store, was born. Our business grew and expanded, and my health improved, and so my wife and I began to work in our yard a lot. And I found that I really truly enjoyed working in the yard. So we decided that we would start cutting some yards. So my boys, Douglas, DeMonte, yeah, I believe they're out there somewhere. Ty Corrie is not with us. We, we went about cutting yards. I also learned about the city, cutting lots. But I did not meet the equipment requirements to cut for the city. One day, as I passed by the church and saw our minister, Moselle Williams, he was out there cutting the lot by himself, and so I stopped to lend a hand. And when I needed a tractor to qualify for, to cut for the city, I got that tractor from Brother Moselle. And y'all, DC Lawn was born. Not long after that, the men put me over cutting the church. And the truth be told, it was the church that set my mind on going into the lawn care business. It was at this point I was finally able to give back more to my commu, my community. I partnered with Ms. Lorraine Robinson at that time. She asked me if I would be willing to or wanted to participate in keeping America beautiful, keeping West Memphis beautiful. And y'all, I love my city, and I hate clutter, I hate litter, and so I agreed. And it was at that time that my church family agreed also. I had the whole Seventh Street Church of Christ out picking up trash as we went through this community. Later, one of my church members, young lady by the name of Jennifer Sloan, she mentioned my company to her job, Travel Centers of America, and this became the first official contract. I knew that if I wanted to succeed, I needed to grow my business further, so I saved my money, I bought commercial equipment, and I hired workers. Many of them are out, they're with me today. And DC Lawn became DC Professional Lawn Care LLC. I read that the first five years can make or break a business, but by the grace of God, I've been in business now for eleven years. This year, this year, we expect to hire twenty-five full-time employees. And it's all thanks to God, it's all thanks to my family, it's all thanks to my church family, that DC Professional Lawn Care LLC can service the city of West Memphis in the way that it does, and we pray that we continue to do.
Thank you, Mr. Chrisley, and I would like to add that Mr. Chrisley will cut the elderly yards, I mean, he did it for me many times, he'd just cut their yards for free, that, he wouldn't hold back, he was cutting it just like they were paying him a hundred and fifty dollars, he'd just get out there, he and his little boy, sometimes would be out there cutting the yards, and I'm very, very thankful for him. We talk about bringing businesses into the city of West Memphis, but here's a business right here, homegrown in the city of West Memphis. Employees out there now thinking about hiring twenty-five more, most certainly, we are so proud of you, and this is Business Excellence Award. You see Chamber of Commerce, what we're doing here? Oh, I'm sorry, that's my, excuse me, this is my call to prayer. I'm sorry. Celebrating Black History Month 2024 Business Excellence Award, presented to Darren Chrisley, uh, DC Professional Lawn DC Professional Lawn Care. Thank you for your many years of hard work and dedication to the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, from your Mayor McClintock, Lorraine Muhammad, and West Memphis. That concludes, we're going to ask our mayor to have a few words. All participants stand here, and we're going to try to get some idea of picture.
I'm going to be very quickly, but I definitely want to say, this hits sort of different for me, this program today, Ms. Muhammad, because of the experience that I just shared. Like I told everyone, when I first came in, I actually just came in from a place called Dakar, Africa. And I want to tell you the significance of that place. Once I was there, my guy took me, and he introduced me to the mayor, who was Mayor Arma Adar, and they named me the ambassador to Dakar, Africa. And during that time, they took me around as well with my partner, who I was with, and we got to see some significant places, and this is why I'm talking about this right now. We went to a place where most of us may have known, it's the door of no return. What that was is when we was captured as slaves. We was beat down, groomed, to get on ships and come to America. I stood in that door that many of my ancestors stood in coming to this country. But by the grace of God, looking at everyone that's on here, from Mr. Anthony to the youngest man that's here in front of us, it's great to say, we may have started from the bottom, but now we here. So I definitely, I definitely want to commend everyone to continue doing positive things in our city, making a difference. Like Mr. Chrisley said, we bumped heads a lot, but we came to a point that it's greater things that we can work on, and we made those things happen. And I think over years, I proved myself to these gentlemen. And everyone here, to my teachers, to everyone that's here, I just want to thank you all for this award, but I want to let you know that the people that's back there, they would be very proud of what you all are doing today over here. Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to try to get a good picture, and I think there's food out there, it has food arrived. I want you all to really enjoy it. Eat as much as you want, eat it all. I don't need to eat any, I'm too fat. We're going to ask our honorees if they can kind of get together so we can go ahead and get this. Can we get it with the boys right here, or do we need to move them back? Boys, you all come back up here.
It's good. No, you're good.
No, 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 this is my neighbor right here.
Should we, should we stand here? Sir.
And we're going to get this one, we still have this.
Oh, absolutely.
Bless you, Dad. Yeah, I get it down there.
Is it possible if everyone shifted this way, so we can make sure we have, him in the photo, just everyone shift this way, so we can take a picture like this?
Some of you at the end come on this side. You young men?
Yes, yes, right. So to take a photo like this.
Thank you.
Right, right. Yes, yes, ma'am.
There you go.
Yes, ma'am. Just make sure.
And then your Tyron.
Come on, come on over here. Y'all have to stack up in here.
Ma'am, can you come up right behind him so we can get you with him? There you go, Mr. Anthony. There we go.
There you go.
Yes, sir.
All right, one right here, here we go. Three, two, one.
To our city council, we just got a few more small oiler business we need to take care of. Sure, I can't be here tonight, all right? We got, we got an urgent piece of business we need to take care of. City Attorney got to give that.
Oh, yeah, City Attorney has to give that.
We got Ms. Broadway here, need to get our transportation service too.
Now, we got, Mike's got something from the EMO, he's got a great one. It's a lawsuit.
Real quick.
What I'm going to do to kind of speed this up, council, want to do to speed this up, we just going to report the committee, the committee reports at the next council meeting. All right? We have moved forward with that. Also, the proclamation that I had, the young lady had left, so I do that the next meeting. Then we're going to turn to the City Attorney, he got something he needs to talk to you all, y'all have to make decisions about.
Okay. We have been asked by the municipal league to consider a settlement demand, which has been made by a current employee, still working with us, but has sued the city. I won't use names, but the demand is $250,000 lump sum payment, paying $40,000 for the attorney's fees, and some other things that I'm not going to talk about because it would, it would be too, it might single this person out, so I don't want to talk about the other things. But what the municipal league is asking us to do is to reject this settlement offer, and we'll go forward from there. That's what they've asked me to get a vote from y'all on, is to reject the settlement offer. What we have, and we're standing in lawsuit right now, is each side has filed motions for summary judgment, which means that the case could end without a trial at all if our summary judgment is granted. So that's why we need to reject this settlement.
May I entertain a motion to reject it?
Second.
In discussion. All in favor, aye? Oppose? It is officially rejected. We had four people on citizen request, but Attorney Smiley and Attorney Harris had spoken. You know, we had Ms. Broadway application for a transportation service at the last council meeting. We overlooked the application, so this will be the week that we will vote on it. You all will vote yeah and nay on it. I didn't see any problems with it personally, so, well, you all, no opposition to it as well, so.
She's done all her I's, all her T's, has everything in place.
I get a motion, second to approve it?
So moved.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? Congratulations, it's approved. I didn't see a Ms. Harris Jackson in here, so I know.
She's not here.
Yeah, I know where it is, so, I didn't see her. Unless you all want Councilman Coon to do his committee before. I entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, aye? Oppose?